Okay, the time is five thirty. I'd like to call a special meeting to order. Lisa, could we please have a roll call?
Director Spatter.
Here.
Director Rice.
Here.
Director Patti Simon.
Here.
Director Lafferty.
Yeah.
Director Casey.
Here.
Marjorie Rana.
Here, thank you. Okay. So. We have six candidates that we're looking at here. Just a reminder to everybody, we don't mention their names. We don't mention their previous employment, or how much money they made, or whatever it is. So. What I'd like to do is to go down the list of candidates. Candidate A. And by a show of hands, I want to find out which members would like to interview. Candidate A, B, C, D. And majority rule, so if we get four votes to interview a candidate, that candidate will be interviewed. If we get three, no. Okay? So. As we're moving forward here, Lisa will keep tally. So we're looking at candidate A. By a show of hands, who would like to interview candidate A? We have one.
There's two, my hands up.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Two for candidate A. Okay? Candidate B. Who would like to interview candidate B? We have two.
Okay.
They have three.
They have three.
Three?
They have four.
Okay.
Four? Okay. Candidate C. Two for candidate C. Candidate D. Four.
Five.
Okay. Candidate E. Four. And finally, candidate F. Just one, two? Two. Okay. So. Our interviews. Are scheduled for May fifth. And we start first at eight thirty in the morning. So what we'll have, Lisa, if you could do this, set up the interviews. For candidate B. Candidate D. And candidate E. Okay? And then, uh, as we're moving forward in this, this is the day that. At Minnesota, Ask Me. Administration and probably students, and again, I'm not sure how we squeeze that in, but they get a chance to ask their questions. But here's how we're gonna do this. We're going to get the questions from each group, and there'll be two questions or whatever, I'm not sure. And they're gonna give them to us, and we're gonna ask the questions, but we'll know. Cause I will say, this question came from Ed Minnesota, this question came from Ask Me. And then we can ask the questions, they can write their notes down, and we write our notes down, and we'll decide. I don't think it's necessary to have anything other than right here in the boardroom. There's, you know. So people can attend, it's an open meeting, and uh, we'll interview these three candidates. And we'll start at eight thirty in the morning. If that works for the members. Yeah, okay.
And then, I know the last, I, when I look back at my notes, we did forty-five minute time slots.
Okay.
And then gave a fifteen minute like break in between the two.
Yeah. And that was, and that was plenty. They really, that was, you didn't run it, you didn't make it one week, cause usually it was more like thirty-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
We did the last time.
We did, yeah, so wait, how are we doing the interviews on May fifth?
May fifth. Starts at eight thirty.
Yep.
Ask Me, Ed Minnesota, Administration, and Students will submit a couple of questions.
I thought that was the eighth.
No, it's the fifth.
I thought we were even doing these on the fifth.
Wait a minute here now, hang on, hang on, let's just, listen, you know. We're gonna interview three people. I see no reason why we can't make a decision the, May fifth. If we're gonna hire somebody. No sense procrastinating. I don't think we should drag this out.
So then they're gonna go from us to other people then?
No, they're gonna submit their questions to us and we're gonna ask them.
To us.
Nobody else.
Yeah.
Bob.
Shelling.
So, per the, um, the other organization's notes, are we gonna see their notes before, okay?
Yes. Yes.
That same day?
Yes.
So how are they asking their questions?
They're giving them to us.
They're, they're gonna submit them to me, okay?
But two from each group.
And two from each group?
Yes, he changed, yeah, cause we were, we had initially already agreed at one of the last board meetings. That we were going to ask our questions and still have them ask theirs and get their input on it.
But it works the same way here, because we'll have their input. When they ask their questions, we will write down, you know, our, our thoughts.
How are we getting their input if we're asking the questions and still gonna be our opinion of the answer to their question?
No, they're supposed to, they can be here too.
They're gonna be here.
Be here to listen to me.
So how can we be here? We have a school to be in with students, you know, we take a nap.
No, that's how it, cause the last time.
It was after school.
No, no.
No, it was during the day.
It was during the day, and it was. They did their, we did ours, and then we put them together. And that's, I don't.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't see how the.
Well, they should do it, you could do it after we do ours, if they want to ask the questions, and then we could come back and we could, I mean. I think it's nicer not to have people have to come back two days.
Right, the, the people who are interviewing.
Yeah, interviewing people, I think that's kind of, I mean. If you could only have three people, I think you can do it all done in one day.
I do too, but I do.
People are traveling.
I do believe that that should be discussed and.
At the same time.
Yeah.
Decided.
The members of Admin and Ask Me and Admin will be ranking during the interview.
That's what we can, that's also something we have to do.
And then they will, when they're done, when we're all done, I will. Give it to Chair, and so you'll have their sheets too.
So then, we're gonna need more than forty-five minutes per, because as a school, so we're not asking any of our own questions then, as a school, but we're only asking theirs.
No, we're asked ours too.
Okay, the, the last time, no.
So there'll probably be like five questions?
An hour, you should maybe block an hour, I mean, if you start at eight thirty.
So it's eight, okay, if the, each group is giving us two questions. Each group, that's Admin.
Ed Minnesota.
Ed Minnesota, the students.
And Ask Me.
And Ask Me, so that's eight questions. Plus then, the last time, we each asked two questions to the interviewers. So. It could potentially take longer than forty-five minutes for their interviews. We should probably schedule it a little longer than forty-five minutes.
Yeah, maybe different hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Because now we're adding questions.
And we don't have as many interviews, that's why I think we definitely add this time, we can, definitely.
Right. But we're gonna have to just make it longer, and then.
Even an hour and fifteen minutes, you know, an hour for interviews and then fifteen minutes to. To group each other.
You take your chance to.
Yeah.
Just whichever being that I wasn't involved in the last one, Director Rice stating that it was done during the day, I still don't know. If the question's been answered, how do, does Ask Me and. The teachers.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Because they decide in their units, who, they have the union days that they can give. The union members, you only get like two people to come and ask the questions anyway, so they decide as a group, who's gonna come.
Who's gonna go.
So that is still gonna be the case.
And as far as like conferring with the rest of the Ask Me group or whatever, two people are making that decision on behalf of everybody?
That's.
Is that how it worked last time?
I.
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah.
I can't remember how you guys.
We did it quite a bit different last time. I think there was about six or seven teachers, and we conferred, and I don't know how many Ask Me people, maybe one of you guys sat in, I don't know. But I know the teacher group was big, I think we filled that whole table, we had a big one too.
Unless we. I agree with doing all the interviews in one day, you know, and having, not having people come up from wherever, you know, but.
Well, you could schedule theirs in the afternoon, or after ours.
If, if we were, I mean, I think this is all legit, but maybe we get the employee groups. To do theirs first. Or whatever, and then they give us notes and we do ours. Second or.
Not to be super selfish, but I'd like a break to go see Tom's concert.
Oh.
Which is over there. It starts at one, he's in third grade, so I'll only be like, within that twenty minutes, it's.
Well, I mean, as school board members, if we can. I mean, if we can start at eight thirty and start with them, I mean, there's no reason that when they're done with us in that, you have forty-five minutes, half hour.
They couldn't just take a break and then. Yeah.
Then they could go meet with the other group at, and say.
They're different, they're different.
In a different spot, yeah.
And I don't know, anybody from Ask Me did it the last time we hired superintendent? Any of you girls there? You guys were involved in it?
Yes.
And how many of you came to ask questions?
They were.
I mean, it was during the day, it was still during the day, so you had to take time off.
Yeah.
I mean, you get union time, I mean, I know you get paid.
I keep getting mixed up with when we did Carla's too, but. The super, it was really different the last time with the super.
But Carla, that, Carla wouldn't have been a part of the whole interviewing the principal.
No, 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 I, cause I.
You interviewed the principal, yeah, okay.
Yes, yes, that's right.
The rest of us didn't.
So.
That would have been only you, but I was wondering how many Ask Me members actually.
I honestly don't remember.
Yeah.
There weren't just two. I don't.
The number two was the questions. Each group was told two questions.
Each group could do two questions, yeah. Yeah, I remember that, I think we have that in our notes at. From last time, that you guys picked like two, two or three questions, that's all you could ask.
And then they should have overlapped, like they were just.
Yeah, that they were different from our questions and.
I'm just wondering. Our groups dealt with each of those candidates for a good thirty minutes, I think. So I'm pretty sure we, we might have asked a question at peace, and I wanna, like I said, I think there were like six or seven of us. And we should ask at least one question.
Well, well, we're gonna do it the way we want to do it.
No, no, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think the best, I don't think that's, oh, what last time?
I do like the idea of all of us being able to hear all the questions. And being able to hear all the answers that, you know, as a collective group, you know?
Right.
But then the question is, how long for the confer time for us to ultimately make the decision?
But I don't wanna like, I don't, I, I mean, I would like to look back at our notes and make a decision and not just say, alright, interviews are done at noon. All three candidates, hurry up, give me your. Rating sheet.
We don't need the last notes, I think we just need to just make a. Logical decision here, we all decide that we want to do it in one day.
So the last time we interviewed, like, five or six people.
Yeah, we, we made a.
So it took a whole day for us to get through our interviews, and that's why there was a separate date.
Mm-hmm.
Even when you cut that in half, you can get it done in one day, it's just being respectful of people's time as well, cause they're taking time off, they're coming here, they're driving here, so I think it can be done in a day. And then if we have to confer.
How is that, how should that look? Where they just give us the questions and we ask, and they sit there?
Well, I don't know if they ask their questions.
No, they can ask their own questions, I think.
I think Bob said that he was gonna have them have their questions.
He wa, that was, but I think we've kind of turned that a little bit.
I think we can do our questions and then they can do theirs, cause there's still only a couple of questions from each group.
So, the other thing that we have to be cognizant of is, these questions have to be approved. By MSBA, because we don't want anything going, you know, into privacy and all of this.
Well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna be redundant, we wanna also make sure that we kind of know which ones we're, we're picking, so that we, the person gets asked. Different questions. Doesn't help if you ask the question and then, you know, four hours later, the same question's asked.
Right, agree.
So each group is gonna have to.
Give Bob the questions or not?
Come up with questions. And then we have to get them approved.
Make sure there's no double question.
Make sure that there's not a lot of double, and then you guys are gonna have to decide in your union groups, who's gonna be here to ask the questions. And we'll probably, what, do. Ours in the morning and then.
I would say do ours in the morning, and then we can just, can we just sit there and they take, take the table area there?
We can sit, we can sit in the audience and listen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we did that once before.
Cause there's a couple spokespeople from each group, you should listen here and ask the person questions, and then the groups can take notes.
So if the labor groups are, let's just say the labor groups are sitting at this table and they're asking questions, and we sit back there.
Yeah, we have our note sheets, we can take.
And we can write it down, you know, we did that when we. Before this superintendent, the previous superintendent, we sat in the audience and listened to. The public and whatever, ask their questions, so I think that's legit, yeah.
And they get to sit in the audience as well.
Sure.
So then. Who is going to get a hold of our student questions and?
Well. Lisa.
I already reached out to a couple of groups already, so.
Of the group, like student council or.
Yeah.
And I know for community members, I know there was two names that I had given to Bob for community members that would like to be part of asking questions, so.
So let me just try to recap here. We'll ask our questions.
Starting at eight thirty.
First, eight thirty, yeah, step aside. Ask Me and their representatives will come up, ask their two, possibly three questions, or follow-up questions, whatever. They'll step down. Ed Minnesota, Ed Minnesota comes up.
Administration, and after Ed Minnesota.
Do you think we're gonna need a bigger room?
First or second?
So would you have the candidate sitting there the whole time, and still, there again, it's nice if everybody can hear the same question and evaluate accordingly, whether. I mean, if everybody's submitting their questions, whether who reads it or not. Everybody gets represented, and everybody can.
That's what I think it should be.
You have a better, you have a better format to, I guess, evaluate that candidate from all groups.
Well, that's true, and then there, also, I was just thinking about that as well, like the candidate really should just be able to do within their interview or their sheet, and then be done.
And be done.
And be done.
So we should have maybe all of the questions and ask that person, everyone can listen to everything, and then release that person, like you said, schedule an hour, hour fifteen minutes, and then there's.
I would do, yeah, eight thirty to nine forty-five.
Yeah, they have.
And then we just ask all the questions, get them for people to read them, or have someone come up from the representative come up.
No. No, each, somebody from the groups will have to be here that day, and then once we're done asking our questions, we'll step, they come up.
That's fine. Yeah.
And then, yeah.
And then they ask their questions, so we're all in here that whole time.
You know, we sit.
Well, either, either whether it's Bob or reading all of them, or just people, you know, the groups coming up and asking a question at the podium, there's no difference there, as long as the questions were submitted ahead of time.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And once you get through the three questions, you can take a break and come back after school, if that helps, like you said, someone's in a rush to, to go through all the data, but all the candidates would be interviewed.
Yeah.
Their interviews would be complete, all the questions would be asked from all the.
Would be completed.
And then our school board, then we would. Our actual meeting of making that decision and having all the results would be.
Could be after school.
Eight, eight, seven, yeah, the eighth, the eighth is the next morning.
Well, that's true, the eighth is a meeting right after, so it's Friday to Monday, so that's something.
So we get the notes by the eighth. So we can get the group's notes and branding sheets?
Yeah, we'll have, we should have the notes that day, and then Friday, the eighth will make the decision on, we're gonna offer or not.
That makes sense.
That sounds good.
Whether it's on the eighth, or you could, you know, just leave on the third, after.
The fifth, you mean the fifth, in the afternoon.
The fifth, during the afternoon.
After the time.
Yeah.
Like after school, we could come back and eat.
Yeah. We could do that too.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because then at the board, then you wouldn't just make a recommendation, but then if you guys already know, you could call on references, you could call and see.
Yeah.
You could make a conference.
You know, I mean, you could actually formally, uh, hire them on the eighth.
Or make a, yeah, make some.
So is, I mean, you guys can ha, each group can have who they're gonna have here and take the time off from work during that interview process, they pick one person to ask the questions, like. Up at the, we'll stay sitting here, interviewist will be over there. And then whoever's asking the question for each group comes to the podium, asks the question, and then those that are here for that, for the union, or, you know, whichever group, then they can sit back there and rank them and give us the sheet. Whoever's present for the interviews.
Like.
If it's a big group, would you want the auditorium set up with a mic?
Boy, I think that that's.
Well, the auditorium's gonna help a concert.
That's big.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I think, you know.
Auditorium keeper.
No, 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 we can't put it all in there.
You know, I think we'll be okay in here, um, we're not gonna have a hundred people, you know, um. So let's just recap and do that, so the board will. Come in at eight thirty and ask our questions of the candidates, correct? Then we'll be done. And then whichever group comes in first, I don't care, Ed Minnesota, Ask Me, doesn't matter. They ask their questions and we sit here and listen. And they get through all of that, and we have their notes, then we come back. After three o'clock, let's just say, for argument's sake, and evaluate and make a choice.
Well, and if, if for some reason, we have like some other follow-ups, or we can always make it may, I mean. You don't have to.
Cause the weekend, yeah, something happening between Friday and anyways.
Right.
Yeah. So, okay.
You know.
Unless.
I understand that, you know, being on top of things, but jeez, I don't wanna, you know. Rush through this and then.
I know what's the scenario if there isn't a candidate, then it would be.
Plan B. And that's open for discussion. And B. If there's not a candidate that we, I mean, again, I mean. Last time we hired the superintendent, it was five to one. Okay? Now, for my own personal thing, I don't know any of these people, I've never met them, I don't know who they are, so their impression when they come and sit before us is gonna go a long way. Um, and so I just think, you know, because we don't know them, makes life a lot easier, and uh. So I think that, you know, if we can put it all together in one day and make a decision. Now. Like, you know, we've been saying, we're, we're not in a rush. This is not a rush situation, we've got a board meeting on the eighth, we've got a board meeting on the twenty-second. Whatever the members want, I mean, it doesn't matter.
I'd be comfortable picking somebody on the fifth in that afternoon.
Yeah, unless something came up that, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying that.
Maybe five, six.
Yes.
Run a minute.
And, and then the, you know, the thing that, then the, um. The finalists, which are, we have three, okay, we have three finalists, their names will be public. And. So then when we discuss that, we can talk about their names, and what we like, what we don't like, back and forth like that, you know.
They're public after tonight, I think that night.
Once.
Well, once they have, once they have, yeah.
On the.
Yeah, after the fifth, after the fifth. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When would you like our questions submitted? Make sure there's no duplicates, like, so you can pass them by the MSBA and.
Well, I think, you know, if we can do something this week, which would be very nice, um, so, again.
Can you re-e mail that, can you e-mail that out to us, so we can get from that?
Yeah, I have a list of questions, there are three pages of them.
Yeah, you gave us one of them.
Have you got those, or?
I can.
If you can re-e mail that to me.
I'll send that to you, okay.
I'll, I'll get it out there.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think you gave it to you, but I think you lost it.
No, I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it.
So. So. Now.
Mark, do you have the list?
Yep.
Okay, so, of questions, yeah.
The questions.
Yeah.
Can I just, you know, Google Doc where we can highlight what we're gonna do?
Well, that would be nice. I like really.
No.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, but at least we could say that, otherwise, again, if I didn't, you could assign which questions.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm just giving the questions, sorry.
I think, let's follow the questions, those all.
I just didn't understand, like, I, I could go back and find the two that I read last.
Yeah. Okay, so now we have to make sure the groups understand what is going on. Do the groups understand that you have to pick some people then, and you're gonna, you have to submit your.
Okay, two questions.
Well, you can have more than two people, but, I mean, you just can only submit two, three questions.
Yeah, if you've got more members of the union that can sit here and take the day off, by all means.
Right? Two, three.
But we don't, we don't have subs, so that's gonna be, we're gonna have to really clear that with.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna, yeah.
Of all.
As long as they can be there, but for sure, we need to try to make sure there's at least two of them here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On behalf of them.
So, are you gonna take all the questions that are submitted, that are gonna be the final questions of, with like a five rating scale, and are we all gonna get?
Pretty much.
Everybody's gonna get it, and we're gonna submit?
Pretty much. You're gonna reach your, you know.
Okay, and.
Well, the rating sheet just looks like this, it's just lines, and you're gonna rate them?
Well, this one will probably be a little different, questions, yeah.
It'll be right next to the questions.
Yeah.
That's kinda what are, and that would be, yeah, and that would be so nice, if you could ask a couple lines again.
Yeah. It did.
Just to.
Yeah.
Stay away from yes and no questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If you read the questions right there in the office, you can pick any of them, you're gonna get some pair. Ask Me will have to get some people and.
You know, paragraphs or sticks, and so.
I don't remember last time, we didn't have a scale, it was like, nope.
Okay, so the groups again, Cindy, the groups again are, just so I can make my mind up. Students, Community, Admin, and Teachers Union.
And Ask Me.
And Ask Me.
So there's five groups.
So, with these questions, we have twelve categories. So if each member asks two questions from a category, I don't care which category, we'll go from there.
Well, and I, I think that they had a good idea about Google Docs, and then. Is there some way we could set that up, and then everybody could submit their questions that way? Would that be better? I, I can't set it up.
I'm sure somebody can. I can't do Google Docs.
No, I'm not a top questioner.
And you're just telling me, you know, basically, if you're gonna be, they're gonna make an effort.
Oh, yeah, who has, make a copy of Mark's, he's got a, are you, you got writing on those questions? Oh, you, is yours blank?
Yeah, mine's blank.
Lisa, you could make copies and give it to him right now. I, I, I'm not trying to be bossy, that sounded bossy, I'm sorry. Would you be so kind as to make copies of these questions?
And they don't have to use that.
They don't have to, yeah.
Well, I was, what I was thinking is those, those questions would be for us.
A nice, yeah.
You can kind of modify it a little bit, if you like.
So, whatever.
I mean, we all, pretty much, yeah. Follow up with the same question I asked.
We, uh.
So, um.
I'll look back.
We have a couple other things I'd like to discuss.
Why are we into the real? Yeah.
Okay.
None of it too good, again, we'll discuss. So, in an email, I said that I was setting up a meeting with Tom Watson from Hibby, or Hibby. Hibby was supposed to meet with Tom Watson on the seventeenth of. May.
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Watson canceled that meeting with Hibby.
Oh, yeah, canceled.
Yeah, so here's what I think, again. And this was based on the availability of the people that we, you know, are gonna work with. So, Tom Watson told me to schedule it, book it. So. I picked the twenty-second, cause he was available, and it's a board meeting night. So I'll be here, I don't know if he's gonna be able to do it or not, so I have to reach out to him. Okay, so I don't know what's the status is of the Watson meeting. He was having heart surgery, which tells me that, you know. He had, he had heart surgery before, and came back very quickly, and now he has to go back in. So, um. I don't know what's the status of that meeting, I have no idea. But I will let you know. Then on June twenty-sixth. John Colosimo is coming in to do a training for all of us, that we need a, I think we need a good refresher on HIPAA and everything like that, so we don't. Step our toe into the water and get ourselves in trouble.
That was June twenty-sixth?
June twenty-sixth, and that will be after our board meeting. And John Colosimo will be here.
I will not be here.
I'll fill you in. Um. Then, we have a board meeting on the eighth. We have a board meeting on the eighth, okay? And Ingenza and ARI are gonna be here on the eighth to make a presentation.
The eighth of May?
Eighth of May, they'll be on the board agenda. And other than that, I don't have anything else, unless members have something they wanna bring up.
So then Tom Watson, when you're just waiting on confirmation, otherwise he'll have to reschedule that, because I already have to reschedule the giving meeting, so they have to get that with two before.
That's correct, so, I gotta, you know, I think the.
That's fine, yeah.
That's correct, so I gotta, you know, I think they rescheduled Hibbing's for.
And. And that one is for everybody, not just.
I'm not just, yeah, we need, we can, our, like, things that we think would be, you know, good.
Yeah, that's the. Topics of, topics of collaboration with the Hibbing School District. And then there's, he wants to schedule two meetings with each board, full board. And then we'll have committees, of which, uh, Mark and Danielle have volunteered for along with me. So we'll kind of go from there, I'll let people know what the story is and just go from there, so we'll take a deep breath and come back on May fifth. Okay, any other information or topics of discussion from members?
No, just, I think that we have to be, um, you know, because I emailed you, you know.
Yeah, you did.
And I, only because I just feel we have to be aware of, I mean, when we talk about stuff at a meeting and we decide stuff at a meeting or at, even in just discussion, that I count on it to be, to stay the same and not to, you know, that it changes, you know, I mean, that's all. I mean, it's all worked out fine and it's good and, but I just think that we have to be, um.
So, at the end of that meeting, I said, based on the availability of these people, and that's when he was available, so.
And I like when you, I like when we keep it on Monday, I don't.
I like Mondays.
You already, you're here, meeting.
Yeah. That's what I like, that's what I like.
It's kind of helpful, it's helpful, yeah.
Okay, so here is no other information for the group, a motion to adjourn is in order. Shelly, the chair will support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries at six oh three. Thanks, everybody.
We have to get it back, yes, this needs going, you're looking at our notes, stuff going on.
You want, you want, does she want these back?
Yeah, this stuff has a little back.
I think, if we're making a hundred copies, we can use those for the interview, right?
Yeah.
Lisa, we can assume these are for interview.
I separated the ones that we're interviewing from the ones that I did.
You did?
Oh, I did not.
No, it's not, Lisa, you don't need this sheet though, right?
The sheet.
I'm just kidding, guys. After Miss Chiselle. Lisa, I kind of did the time set, eight thirty to nine forty-five with a fifteen-minute break. Then a, it would be ten to eleven fifteen. And then it'd be ten, eleven thirty to twelve forty-five. And that should give Jackie enough time to get over to her.
Well, and I think he's third grade, so I'm thinking they're probably each twenty minutes or so.
Yeah. That would be, we may not go till.